Welcome to today's episode of the Business Spotlight powered by PayRock, where we shine a light on the incredible people that make our community thrive. These episodes, this podcast is sponsored by PayRock, which is a payment solutions provider. We work with any size business, improving payment acceptance and efficiencies while reducing overall costs. You can get ahold of me via the Facebook page, or if you know me, you know how to get ahold of me. Today in the studio, we're joined by Kyle Gamroth. He's currently a Casper City Council member and candidate for Ward number two. And even though we're in the midst of an election season, this conversation was planned well in advance, and our goal is to do a deeper dive on the issues that matter most to Casper residents. Kyle has a unique perspective on the challenges and opportunities facing our city, and we're here to explore those in greater detail. If you're a longtime resident or new to the area, this discussion will bring valuable insights into the future of Casper. So take a second, if you don't mind, and like and describe in the box below, whether you're on Facebook, or YouTube, or now, or on Instagram, and share these posts with people in the community that would want to know what's going on in this election season, but also in the future of Casper. So Kyle, thank you again for joining us today.
Thanks again for having me. Glad I didn't scare you off the first time.
You definitely didn't scare us off. So let's, for those that aren't familiar with the fact that you are a City Council member, can you tell us just a brief bio of how long you've been in local government? And why are you running again for City Council?
I've been in, so this is my first term on council. I'm three and a half years into my four-year term. And so obviously running for reelection again, and it would be for another four-year term. The reason I originally got interested in serving on council was I really wanted to lend my whatever talents, skills, and expertise I may have. I wanted to lend it to my community and use it to support my community in the best way possible. I gave it a lot of reflection and thought about it, a lot about how I could best do that. And I thought local government would be a great way to marry my skills, talents, and strengths to my interests. And, you know, who knows? We'll see how it's going. But yeah, I get a lot of satisfaction out of it, so I feel like I'm on the right path.
So this is the end of your first four-year term? And you're looking at getting reelected for another four-year term?
Yep, myself and four of my colleagues. So five councilors are up this year, and then four will be up in two years. So that every two years, we're replacing half the City Council.
All right. Many people, what's that?
Potentially, you know, if incumbents stay, and I guess you're not replacing anyone, but half the council is up for election every other year.
So when is the election? That's a good question.
So the primary is August 20th, and the general is November 5th. And so the way City Council works is during the primary, you win out. So there's two seats in my ward open. And so I forget exactly how many candidates are running in my ward, but the primary will narrow it down to the top four. So the primary narrows down. They only allow twice as many as the seats available. So if there's one person running, if there's one seat available in one ward, only two people make it through the primary. In my case, where there's two seats available, only four people make it through the primary. And so then the general election is where you decide who's going to be sat.
Okay. So there are more than two people for Ward two?
Yes.
That are attempting?
Yep, me and the Vice Mayor Lisa Ann Gabretson are both, our terms are both up right now.
Okay. But how many people are actually campaigning for Ward two? Because you mentioned more than two, because you said-
Yes. Yeah, I should know this.
But roughly, because I only thought there were two people that were actually campaigning?
It's three or four. Gosh, and I wish I had that list right in front of me. I should know, so that I can give all those people names, so they can look into them. But yeah, I think we have probably like 12 candidates across the three wards. Our forum at the Legal Women Voters this past week, a couple of folks weren't able to make it, but we had about 10 people on stage.
Got it. Okay. That wasn't supposed to be a gotcha question.
I'm ashamed it was. I should know.
I just legitimately thought there were just two people running for Ward two.
I think there's more than that, three or four, I think.
Got it. Okay. People have a general idea of what City Council does, but in that general idea, there's also a lot of misconceptions about the authority and the influence that City Council executes. Can you give us an idea of what, you know, what do you have authority over? And what is outside of your purview?
Yeah, we get questions all the time about, you know, somebody recently brought to our attention the need for a walkway across Wyoming Boulevard on the east side, because there's proposed development over there that's going to bring a lot more homeowners into that area. And so that's an issue. That's a YDOT highway, Wyoming 220. And so anything that occurs on that stretch of road has to be approved and coordinated and facilitated by Wyoming Department of Transportation. And that's the case for a lot of other areas around town. CY Avenue, some Yellowstone Highway. There's certain stretches through town that is YDOT responsible. And then we also get conflated sometimes with, you know, some folks think we have some rule or jurisdiction over the school district, and that we share money or pots of money. And they're all very distinct funding mechanisms, and they're all, you know, very separate entities that all have their own governing bodies.
Okay. So specifically, like if we talk about road construction that's happening right now, the major ones are obviously the highway that goes through. There's Poplar, and then there's Center Streets. And how they all intersect unfortunately, because it affects a lot of traffic going in and out of Casper and going through Casper. So out of those three main work sites, which ones fall under the City Council?
So, man, I wish I knew for sure. I believe part of Poplar is state highway, because I believe YDOT is doing part of Poplar. But the proposed improvements to Poplar go all the way up to Collins Street. And so the city will, at the very least, be doing the underground utilities, since the road's going to be getting torn up, that's the best time to get utilities done. We're doing Midwest Avenue that goes east into downtown. We did some Center Street. We repainted the bridge at Center Street Bridge and did some stuff. So pretty much anything close to I-25, where YDOT's doing all their work, we're trying to capitalize on that and take advantage of that, because those areas of town are high traffic and create a lot of inconvenience. And so not only does it make the most fiscal sense to do it at the same time, but also just for the sake of convenience for our residents, it makes sense to try to partner and get things done at the same time.
All right. Casper in general faces a lot of opportunities, but also challenges to stay a functioning and thriving city. In your opinion, you know, what are the top priorities right now that you're dealing with or that you'd like to deal with on City Council?
Sure. We got asked this question at the Legal Women Voters Forum on Monday, and it was, I think, interesting that a lot of folks picked the same things. For me, the biggest one is infrastructure. I mean, we just have so much deferred maintenance that I have been kind of on a crusade since I've been on council to try to catch up in some of that regard, especially streets, because we do surveys, occasional surveys, especially right before the one cent goes on the ballot, about asking our residents, what is the highest priority for you in streets? Always, very clearly, top of the list. Anyone that lives in town knows we have a lot of streets in disrepair. And so infrastructure is huge for me. We did an assessment of all of our public buildings. I think we have right around 120, and there's deferred maintenance for all of those. So that assessment is giving us some insight into how to tackle those, because we don't have the funding to do them all at once. And so, you know, which ones are most in need? And which ones can we get the biggest bang for our buck? And then, yeah, streets, we got an assessment back in 2019 that our average road condition was 59 out of 100. And so I would really like to see that improve. We did allocate more funding to streets during the one-cent allocation. That was something I had pushed for. It went from 3.7 million to 5.45, which is great. It was about a 50% increase. But considering the increased costs that we've all experienced since post-COVID, that's, you know, it's probably 3.7 million and $20,000. And so I just don't think we've done much in regards to catching up. So if I'm on council this next one-cent allocation cycle, I'll be pushing to really boost that even more, because, yeah, we need to catch up on streets and make them a little bit better.
We do. There's definitely an issue with streets and infrastructure that's needing repair. But in addition to that, right now, we're having those three major, or even more than that probably, major construction sites, you know, doing roadwork. So it's a frustrating time, because we need the work, but having all those three major intersections done at the same time can be quite challenging as well. So it's not easy to find that balance, for sure, to coordinate the efforts of all the, you know, the labor force and have to, you know, to do the work, but also to allow us to enjoy Casper in the summer months, when it's the nicest time to enjoy Casper.
Absolutely. And like you alluded to, there's only so many contractors out there. So, you know, I want to get that spending up as much as possible. But there's also going to be a cap where we've already had a rollover streets projects to the next fiscal year while I've been on council, because we just, the season, the construction season to get those things done is relatively short, and there's only so many contractors out there. And so I would like to max out our capacity every summer. You know, we could do it every summer for probably the next 50 years before we finally caught up. But that's what I'd like to see, is just maxing out that capacity, and we'll see.
If we go back to City Council and how things operate, it's sometimes a complex, you know, if you tune in online, there's a complex procedures and topics that are discussed. Can you walk us through how decisions are made? From, you know, setting the agenda for the evening meeting, to making a final decision and executing those decisions? How does all that work?
Sure. Yeah, it can be very complicated. If anyone watched our meeting this week, we were struggling a little bit with just the procedure, because especially when you are pulling things off a consent agenda, or you're making amendments to proposed ordinances, it gets a little tricky. You got to be pretty familiar with Robert's Rules of Order. Generally, if one of us councilors is interested in getting something on the agenda, we'll bring it up in the, what's called the Council Around the Table portion of our meeting, at the very end of every meeting. And city staff will take that direction. They'll put it on a future agenda item list. And as time and ability allows, they'll work that into our future agendas. Usually, it starts off with a work session from one of our department heads or somebody to give us more information about it with a memo attached. And then if we decide to move forward beyond that point, it will, you know, if it's an ordinance, then we'll get an ordinance that we have to establish the first public hearing of. And then after that, every ordinance requires three readings. And so it takes about six weeks to revise an ordinance, just because of the timeline of how things work. And so that's the usual process. This week, what we were struggling with was making an amendment to one of the six-cent proposals, I believe. Oh, yes, that was right. Councilor Pollock wanted to change some language in regards to the fire station proposal for the six-cent ballot. And to do that, you have to approve the consent list as a whole. And then you have to make a motion to pull one of them out of consent, allow discussion, make amendments, and then you have to vote again on that. So we were just getting a little, you know, wound around the wheels this week, just because we had kind of a few different things that we don't get a experience very often.
All right, right. So does that bog down the process sometimes? Does it follow those rules and those protocols to get to a decision? Is that just something, just a necessary evil, in your opinion? Or is it frustrating to have to deal with those things?
It does. A lot of people's complaints is that government is slow to respond to issues and, you know, all the bureaucratic red tape and stuff. And to a certain extent, I agree. It does make you less, you know, quick to handle things. However, especially the ordinances, I do think it's really important to give the public as many opportunities as possible to give their input and feedback. And so there's definitely a balance. We want to be quick and nimble, but we also want to give people a fair shake and give them plenty of time to consider the things that we're talking about and give us their feedback, because we don't ever want to feel like we're, you know, pulling the wool over someone or trying to do things and not giving people the time that they need to let us know how they feel about it.
Right, right. So does it take several weeks sometimes, or longer, to come to a decision? Is that a fair statement?
It depends on the issue. Some of the more controversial ones, we punt multiple times and take multiple work sessions to work through. I'm trying to think of, you know, I don't remember what the most recent example was of that, but there's certainly been a couple since I've been on council. But typically, they follow the, you know, the six-week process. We establish a public hearing. Two weeks later, we have the first one. Two weeks later, we have the second one, then the third one. That's pretty standard, unless it's something controversial. In which case, you know, there have been times where we've gotten to the second reading, and we've gotten community feedback that was compelling enough that we reconsidered. You know, we decided we needed more than two weeks to have that third reading. And so we've punted that into the future to do more homework and give us a little bit more time to take additional information into consideration.
So speaking about punting different issues, there's something that I've read, and I don't know if there's any validity to it or not. And I'd like, you were definitely there at this occasion. But I was told that for the local abortion clinic, if that's the right terminology, it was punted, but also given to Jackson to make the final decision. Why would that be, first of all, why would they ask Jackson to make a decision on what happens here in Casper? And why would the City Council members want to punt at an issue that's actually extremely important on both sides of the aisle? It's an extremely vital and important question. How did that transpire? And was the final decision to actually allow this clinic to exist? Was it a Jackson-mayor decision?
I'm happy to answer that question. This was a year or two ago. Bruce Nell was mayor at the time, so yeah, it probably would have been sometime earlier last year, summer of last year. So Wellspring Health Clinic is the name of the place. And, you know, they were in construction, about to open. And then there was arson at the location, which, you know, took 18 months or something of reconstruction before they were able to open again. We did have a contingency of folks that were coming to a lot of meetings regularly to talk about this issue. They wanted us to close the clinic. They created a resolution, a pro-life resolution, that they wanted the city to adopt. And so we did spend quite a bit of time talking about the issue of abortion last year. And you referred to kind of some of the events, so in regards to Jackson. It's been a year, so I apologize if I'm misinforming. I'll hop in the comments if I find out later after the fact that I provided bad information. But the reference to Jackson, I believe, is because there was a Teton County, I don't know if it's Supreme Court, but the judge, I believe, was out of Teton County, and she was the one deliberating whether abortion is illegal or not illegal in the state of Wyoming. And in regards to Casper as a municipality, the state, the law at the time, and I should know whether it's now illegal or not as a result of the trigger ban that the legislature passed, but at the time, it was legal. And so we, as City Council, felt that if the business is legal, the location that they were in was zoned appropriately for that business. You know, there was nothing, from the city's perspective, other than us exercising what I believe to be undue authority, potentially even illegal authority, to shut down a business without any sort of legal justification. That was the issue. Some folks were upset that we, when that contingency of folks came and spoke to us at a City Council meeting, they wanted some additional work session, because they wanted to know a lot about Wellspring, how they were cleaning their tools, what exact processes they were following in the building, who their demographics were, who their providers were. And so they wanted all these answers to all this information. And so we had tentatively agreed to create a work session to get into that a little bit more. But then after some reconsideration, we decided, you know, again, this is not in our purview. It's not within our jurisdiction. This is going to be settled at a higher court, whether abortion's legal or not. It's legal on paper right now. And so it was just one of those things that we didn't feel like it was, the ball was in our court at that time. And I know some people were upset, because they wanted to learn more. But on the flip side of the coin, you know, my opinion is that the people that were really wanting us to dig into this further, they're not people that would have reconsidered their, you know, they weren't lurking to develop their position. They knew where they stood on the issue. You know, my opinion was that it was just sort of tactics to conflate the issue and make more out of it than it needed to be. And my comments to Mayor Nell at the time, in response to, he had posted a fired GIF online that created a lot of public comments. And we had full council chambers for a couple nights afterwards. I had made comments to him and to the audience that night that, again, it's not within the purview of City Council. I would like us to stay focused on things that we have ability to change, that are within our authority. And abortion is such a divisive issue. I just didn't see the merits in having that discussion on City Council, because it's not something that we have any jurisdiction over. And I'd rather focus on things that we can find some common ground and things that are more local in nature.
So the decision for it to, was it, what was the decision? The first question, was the decision based on whether it needed to be permitting or not to exist as a business? Was that the issue at hand?
No, I don't believe there was any question about that. I don't know who oversees them, probably the Wyoming Medical Board or Wyoming Medical Authority. But again, they had all the prior approvals and authorizations, and they weren't doing anything, and they're still not doing anything. Yeah, I mean, they're still in operation, and I believe they're still providing those services. And so my guess is it's still up in the, you know, Wyoming Supreme Court's hands or the judge out of Teton County's hands. I don't know exactly what the legal status is of it.
So what was the question, though, that was at hand for the City Council?
I mean, honestly, there wasn't a question. We had folks that wanted us to shut down the business or come out and make strong comments in opposition to the business. And again, we had no legal authority to shut down the business. And I do not, it's strange. I talked to a lot of folks that have a very small government mentality, but then there's exceptions to the rule sometimes, where they want us to exercise very big brother, big government kinds of authority. And it is always interesting to, you know, face that contradiction when you have folks that think we're always wielding too much power. You know, there's recently in Oil City News today, it'll be a couple of weeks from now, by the time people see this podcast, but we had demoed a house on, I believe it was 13th and Poplar, put a lien on the property. And I saw in the comments, a lot of people thinking, you know, saying things, this is government overreach and having too much control over private property. And a lot of those same folks would probably also take the position that we should have exercised even more authority to shut down a health clinic that, again, was operating by the letter of the law, and still is, as far as I know.
So what is the general purview of City Council? Is it to focus on permitting rights, economic decisions for a city? Or is it also to intervene on ethical, moral, philosophical issues? Possibly religious issues, whether or not a business should exist or not? Because in this particular issue, it's both sides. It's, there's a clear focus on, it's a business, it's a medical business. Should it exist? Does it have the proper funding or the proper permitting? And does it have, and then the other side of the coin is, is it ethically, is it ethically what we want for this city? So what is the role of City Council in a situation like this?
I mean, I think the role is, you can certainly say things about how you'd like to see your community develop. A couple of different things came to mind as you were giving me that question. One is like the off-track betting, the horse racing. That's something that we've gotten quite a bit of feedback about. But the county commissioners is who dictates how many, if any, of those establishments are allowed in a community. And so, again, we've approved the transfer of a couple liquor licenses in the past couple of years to those entities and gotten a little bit of flak for it. But my opinion is that if you want, City Council should not be able to arbitrarily deny those sorts of decisions or those sorts of approvals based on no legal standing. If you want to see less off-track betting in the city, you need to advocate to the county commissioners to set a cap or a density formula on how close those establishments can be, how many can be in one area. That needs to be done at the county level, because that is within their authority to change. Liquor licenses is another one. We, the city of Casper, recently got approval from the state legislature last year. Our liquor licenses, our bar and grill licenses are essentially going to double over the next five years. And so those applications are going to be coming to us. And again, even if I personally feel like I would like to see like less liquor establishments in the city, if we have that number of licenses, and if the potential licensee is following all the rules, their establishment is zoned appropriately, they've filled all, you know, they've done all the proper permitting, it is my opinion that it should not be, we should not have the ability to arbitrarily deny those applications. If we want to see less liquor establishments, we need to petition the Wyoming Legislature to curtail the number of licenses we have, or we, as a city, need to adopt some sort of regulation or overarching policy to, you know, based on alcohol density research or something, to restrict the number in any certain area. And I personally would love to see that happen. I don't have the bandwidth to be a champion for that cause myself, just because I'm stretched so thin with all the other things I'm engaged with. But I would love to see substance abuse prevention groups or treatment groups come to us with evidence-based plans that are backed by data to support the notion that we should have some sort of structure in place to determine, you know, how we want our community to develop in that sense.
Right. I think it goes back to what is the mission of the City Council or local government? Is it to decide on ethical issues, ethical, potentially moral issues? Or is it to have a 30,000-foot view and look at policy from how many liquor licenses should we allow in per capita, the size of Casper? What types of businesses that we want? But it seems to me that the better role is to influence policy and not try to govern at a, you know, zero-foot level of what's happening. Because I don't think that's the role of, in my opinion, doesn't seem like it's the role of City Council. I think both, you know, acting and doing things ethically is possible at 30,000 feet. But the focus is, are we talking about policy? Are we talking about what's right and what's wrong?
Sure. Yeah, I agree, you know. Again, this is a matter for the Wyoming Legislature, the Supreme Court. If it becomes illegal to provide those services, then we will make sure that, you know, whatever is illegal is not operating in the city. And so I feel like that's above our head. Folks might remember, I don't remember how long it's been ago, six to eight months maybe, but there was a staged die-in, is what it was called, at City Hall steps. Folks really wanting us to take a position on Israel and Gaza. And I think they were even calling, you know, our mayor at the time, Ray Pacheco, he was filling in after former Mayor Nell left. They were calling him, I believe they were quoted in the paper, calling him, you know, genocidal, you know, a genocidal maniac or something like that. So we had folks wanting us to take a position on Israel and Gaza. And that was another issue where, that's above us, man. I mean, what, my opinion is, what influence does a Casper City Council have on the issue of Israel and Gaza? And abortion is the same thing. That's above us, man. That's an issue that is important enough, controversial enough, global enough, or, you know, far-reaching enough that that's, that needs to be settled above us. We need to focus on the more granular things that our federal representatives and stuff, they're not paying attention to. You know, the local things that affect us on a day-to-day basis, those other things, you know, they'll get sorted out at a higher level, and we'll implement them on a local level.
Absolutely. And I agree with you. I think that those issues are obviously vitally important in society. But I think we need to focus on the mission at hand and what is the role of City Council. And so I think that's why, again, I think it's, you're able to perform your duties ethically and morally. I think that that's possible at 30,000 feet. But you're focusing on policy, not focusing on decisions that are outside of your framework. I think at the same time, you can have your own point of view on what's happening in other countries and things like that, but it doesn't affect the role of City Council, doesn't affect Casper. There's probably arguments that would say that it does. It does affect Casper. But I think how Casper is managed, how the city is managed, that's the role of City Council. It seems to be, in my opinion.
There's a lot of people paying attention to Israel and Gaza and abortion. Very few people paying attention to open container ordinances downtown Casper.
Yes, which, if we have time, we're going to get into that. It's in my notes. Let's shift gears into economic development. For many years, Casper and Wyoming has been focused on oil and gas industry. And a lot of its revenues have been derived from that. Are there efforts today to see more diversification? Because oil and gas, as you know, if you've been here for more than 10 years, there's a boom and bust. There's a lot of fluctuations in this volatile industry. What is City Council doing to ensure that we're not solely dependent on the oil and gas industry?
That impacts us, because the oil and gas and mineral development that happens around the state, you know, I'm not as learned up on this as I'd like to be, but my understanding is that much of that funding is kind of directed at the state level. And then we get redistributed that money in the form of what's called direct distribution. And so that's our share of those mineral royalties and severance taxes and all those things. And so, yeah, when it's a bust cycle, we get a lot less of that money. And it's not a huge portion of our budget, but it's significant enough that it definitely affects what we're able to provide in the way of services. My experience is that people are really torn on what role, if any, the city should have in economic development. I've talked to a lot of people that say, we shouldn't. We should focus strictly on pipes paving and police and fire and sort of the core responsibilities. And we don't, we shouldn't be interfering in private development. And I've talked to a lot of other people that believe we do have a responsibility to make sure we have a vibrant, healthy community that has a diverse set of businesses. And so, you know, I, it's, my foot is not planted firmly in one camp or the other. I think we have a limited role. There's some things we can do. We do allocate, I believe it's $400,000 annually, to the Economic Development Joint Powers Board. And they do, among other things, funding of Advanced Casper, which is our economic development agency. And so their job is to recruit new businesses to town. And, you know, like Casper Mint in the old Star Tribune building, they were working very closely with that team to get that business to town. And so, but, you know, that's, as far as controversy goes, that's one of the more controversial topics, because there's a lot of folks that don't think, I've talked to folks very recently that don't believe we should even be operating the Ford Wyoming Center, Hogedon, the Rec Center, because even that is interfering with private development or private enterprise. And so, yeah, people have opinions all along that spectrum. And it is tough on council to gauge where the majority of your constituents reside on that spectrum, just because we don't have any data go off of. We all have interactions with folks in our community, and I am always soliciting and begging for people to give me their feedback on stuff. But that's all anecdotal, and you never know if your circle or your network of people is biased one way or another. And so it definitely makes it difficult to try to nail down exactly where the city should sit and all those things.
It would seem fair that Hogedon should be managed by a small business, a private enterprise, as opposed to a city. Would you agree with that?
Ideally, I would love to see it operated by a city or a user group or some sort of other governing body. And that is the case for some of them. In the state, I think there's only a couple of them. It's oftentimes a municipality that's off running those, because they do, you know, especially in our area, Casper, Wyoming, we have 60-something thousand people. The belief is that- The belief is that Hogedon, you know, it requires a couple thou- hundred thousand dollars in subsidy currently. And so the question is, can a private developer come in there and operate that facility at a profit? Uh, because if not, who, what private developer is gonna take over management of the Hogedon and run it at a two hundred thousand dollar subsidy every year? People get into business to make money. And so.
True.
Um, the concern is that our population just cannot support uh making that lodge profitable. Uh, it's, you know, to uh, um, I see people throw around the idea of uh, Casper should have an outdoor water park. And in my opinion, that's a more clear illustration of the reality, which is our outdoor season for those sorts of activities is very small and our population is so small that, that, I'm not a water park developer. I've not had many conversations with those folks, but my guess is it's a pretty expensive venture. And you have to get quite a bit of turnover uh to make those things work. Uh, my family and I went to Waterworld every summer growing up down in Denver. And even they, I can tell, uh, I've read in the news and stuff, struggle and they have a huge metropolitan.
Right.
Uh, you know, they have millions of people that they're able to draw from and even they still struggle to make those numbers work. And so, you know, it's, it's all a numbers game. We have to have the amount of users um going to be able to make that profitable. I see a lot of folks complaining about uh, our local businesses shuttering their doors and that is always sad to see, but it's often the result of people not patronizing that business. And so, uh.
Absolutely. That, I mean, that's the same, the same argument for the MRG that didn't, you know, actually was eventually uh pulled off of the, to be implemented. It was, it's no longer being implemented, but, but that's the same thing. We're, we're sixty-five thousand people in Casper. And so to support large entities like Delta, like it, it, it does take government's uh help. If we were as large as, as Denver and three million, three million people in the, in the metroplex, it would be a different story. But we have to ma- ma- uh manage our expectations with the size of, size of our, our city.
Totally agree.
At the same time, there would be efficiencies cuz I've personally called, there's a um, a wedding venue that's connected to Hogedon up on the mountain. And I've called, emailed several times and never received a phone, a phone, a phone call back. So, and that's somehow connected to the city. But I think in terms of efficiencies, it could be better if, you know, there's certain advantages for, for private business to, to run certain things cuz they would probably wanna rent out that facility. So.
Oh, yeah. And I know they do. So I'm happy to follow up with you if you weren't getting a call back cuz that was a, a big pivot. I wasn't on council at the time, but I know after they built the new lodge, uh, that was part of the pivot was to use that facility more during the summer months. Historically, it hadn't been, but now we're booking a lot of weddings and other events up there, doing special dinner events and uh, other activities. Eventually it'd be great to have some sort of downhill biking or, you know, fat tire and other things. Uh, people would love, I would love to see, you know, like an Alpine slide or something, stuff during the summer that people can do up there when there's not snow on the ground.
Absolutely, for sure. We actually shifted our sights on another, another venue. So, but uh, but it was, it was probably six, six, seven months ago and I reached out to them like several times. So.
Well, if you or anyone else has that issue in the future, give me a holler. Give me on Facebook or call my number.
Small business. Small business is, I think rightfully considered the backbone of any, any town, but especially, especially Casper. What is city council doing to uh focus on growth, growth initiatives and it, um, to, to support small businesses here?
I don't know, um, you know, there's definitely things going on. Small Business Administration is a, and this isn't city council, but the SBA is a great resource that I've used many times for free market research. They will, uh, I've asked them, hey, in my industry, uh, you know, who are these people? What are their demographics? How much is their annual revenue? How many employees do they have? And so they can give you all that market research. So they're a great resource. There's other, as far as small businesses go, I'm super supportive of the Casper Startup Challenge. Uh, that's, provides resources for entrepreneurs that are trying to get their fledgling business up off the ground. And it gives them some resources for marketing and website design and other things and give, gets them connected to legal resources and all the things they need to do to get their business off the ground. So I'm, I support all of those ventures uh when I can. But as far as like the city of Casper as an organization, what we're doing, um, you know, really the only thing I can think of that would have an impact on small businesses would be like the zoning and stuff. And so I have, um, it's more so on the residential side of things, but I've been asking for developers, contractors and even city staff, their feedback about if we can be more innovative or um, uh, you know, thinking more outside the box in regards to our zoning to facilitate more development. One of the, so uh, this is a good example, I suppose. Uh, recently we took the non-sheathed electrical cable out of our electrical code. It was something that was adopted ten years ago, fifteen years ago, something like that because we have to adopt the international building and electric and fire codes. And so at some point, the international electric code had taken that requirement out of their code, but it was stuck in our city ordinance for some reason. And so we recently uh identified that, figured that out because a developer brought it to our attention. And it was gonna save them three hundred thousand dollars on the cost of their multimillion dollar project. And so those are the things that I'm looking for from the community. What about our code can be streamlined? Or uh, what regulations can be responsibly pulled back to increase development and allow people to do the things that they wanna do? That's feedback I would welcome on council and I was really glad in this case that we were able to help this developer out. You know, clearly at some point, the international electric code governing body decided it was a, a, a bit excessive. You know, not necessary uh for safety and uh public health. And so uh, I'm glad we found that out and pulled it back in code and was able to save this developer a few hundred thousand dollars and save any future developer that time and money as well.
That's a great, a great win. Um, sometimes there's pushback from small businesses that say, you know, they're frustrated with the, the, the time it takes for permitting and, and licensing. Um, wha- what's your, what's your uh response to that criticism? That they'd like to be in business, they'd like to grow their business, but they're waiting for this permit or this license.
Yeah. Uh, in regards to licensing, we did make a recent change last year. We have a contractor and licensing appeals board that they have the dual responsibility of granting licenses, but also being the appeals board when uh those licensees felt like there was a decision that, uh, you know, they wanted to um, uh, debate or um, you know, uh, they, they felt like it was the wrong decision. So we changed the way that board operates. Now it's just an appeals board, number one, cuz it was kind of a conflict. If you're the, the body giving the licenses, but you're also the one responsible for the appeals, you know, um, we'd like to separate those out. Uh, but also we gave our public uh building inspector the um, authority to be able to grant those licenses so that they can be more timely because the contractor and licensing appeals board only meets monthly. And so if somebody applied for a license to do contractor work the day after their meeting, you're waiting through for weeks just before they even can consider it. And so that hangs up the process. So that was something I was glad that we did last year for a couple of different reasons. Uh, permitting, I haven't heard much in regards to what sort of efficiencies we should consider in regards to permitting. I actually had a board meeting yesterday and talked to a couple, a, a realtor and a contractor that both said they were very happy with the way things are permitted. And uh, um, things are very easy in the city of Casper. But if there's any areas where folks have had not that experience, a, a poor experience or um, they have identified areas where we could do a better job, I would welcome that and absolutely, you know, bring that to the council for consideration.
So, so sometimes the issues of, of delays is just the timing, you know, when they, when they present it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, uh, that, there's timelines for pretty much everything. And uh, i- if it's a statute or if it's an ordinance, we have to be by the book unless we've granted ourselves some level of discretion in it, but it's gotta be in words, in the ordinance. And if the words aren't there, then our hands are kinda tied a lot of the time, but.
Um, let's talk about the craft uh beer uh scene here in Casper that's, that's growing. I think, um, I think it's a wonderful development personally. Um, I think that shifting our focus on beer to something that's focused on the product, the quality of the product and then the conversation that can happen around um, that, that beverage. I think that's, that's a great thing. I think it really helps develop community around, uh, around the craft beer, the artisanal beer scene. Um, so I think it's great that we have six, soon, soon seven, um, if my numbers are correct.
I believe you're right, yeah.
Different crafted beer uh breweries in town. At the same time, there's, there's a controversial issue of open container law. Can you tell us how, how ca- uh, the city council is, is addressing that issue that is obviously, uh, it comes with, with this, um, this industry?
Sure. Yeah, I um, agree with you. I, I'm not drinking as much these days, just uh getting older, more sensitive of those things. I don't know why. But um, but when I do drink, I only drink uh locally produced. Sometimes I'll get outside the city and uh, you know, get some Tensley Speed Goat or something like that. But I really try to drink things manufactured in Casper, not only cuz I think they taste better a lot of the time, but also because I like supporting local whenever I can. And so that's one of the reasons I'm some, supportive of the craft beer scene. I would much rather have somebody drinking a nice locally manufactured craft beer as opposed to, you know, binging a couple Bud Lights or something. And so, um, uh, uh, in regards to the open container ordinance, that has been one that was controversial. We had it for one year because our chief of police felt the desire to staff those nights. Um, you know, just to preempt or be proactive about any potential issues with it. It resulted in thirty thousand dollars in overtime costs. And when we spoke to the businesses that were taking advantage of that program, it just, you know, didn't match up the city's commitment to that and their, uh, you know, what they benefited from it. And so, um, council, I did not vote in favor of this, but council had determined we were gonna do without the open container ordinance this year because we didn't wanna spend thirty thousand dollars in overtime. But we had no criminal activity related to the open container ordinance. We had no issues with it. And so my opinion was that we should do it again this year and just not spend thirty thousand dollars in overtime for our police department. And if, you know, we are re- seeing some negative things, uh, we can pull it back. Uh, city of Cheyenne has open container. I think, uh, I, I don't know if it's year round. I think it's year round though. And it's, uh, from what I've been told, it's every day and it's most hours of the day. So it's much more open than ours is. Ours is restricted to between Memorial Day and Labor Day, uh, Thursday, Friday, Saturdays. Um, I think from five PM to ten PM or something. So they're, they're fairly restricted. Uh, you do have to participate in the program by getting uh wristbands on people so that they can be identified. The goal originally of the open container ordinance was, we have so many events going on downtown that some people felt they were sort of tethered to a certain event. They couldn't walk down the street to the next event because they had a beer in their hand. And um, I didn't want to incentivize people binging their beers and feeling like they needed to drink it faster than they normally would so they could move on with their friends to the next venue down the street. And so that was part of the reason we've restricted the area. So you can only do it in a certain area of downtown. And that was the goal, was to allow people freedom to move throughout downtown and not feel pressured to, you know, binge their drinks. And it's, it's not a perfect solution. I do still have concerns with alcohol. I, I've testified to the Joint Judiciary Committee of the Legislature and I've also brought up to my colleagues on council the impact alcohol has on our crime and, and on our public health. Forty percent ish of all crime in Ettona County is alcohol involved. And so it's something that we absolutely need to be mindful of. And going back to the previous talking point, I hope, wish and would welcome uh folks that are more experienced than I, people working in the substance abuse prevention field. Um, some of those groups, I would love for them to bring us ideas of initiatives like a overarching policy to guide alcohol establishments based on alcohol density research or something like that. I would, I would love to see that because it's something that we, it, it's all about finding the right balance. We need to allow it to a certain extent. But uh, once it starts creating more negative impact than positive, we need to find a way to curtail it.
For sure. We need to, like, like you said earlier, we need evidence-based uh solutions. Absolutely. And I, and again, we, it's important to, to, to note, to note that we're differentiating between uh drinking and driving, which is, which is clearly illegal and, and not, not, not the, not the smartest thing to do in the world. And drinking like at Frontier, to shout out, uh, you know, one of their local, local breweries that's down, down on Center Street and be able to walk down the street um and not, and not chug your beer like you would do at a frat party. That's, that's not what we're, we're discussing. I think, and I think, um, again, bringing the emphasis on community and the conversation. I think that's, for me, that's the value that I see in those breweries. I mean, and uh, same with you. I think I drink maybe once or, you know, not very often, not as often as, as before. But when I do, then I'm gonna go for the quality of the product and then the ability to have a conversation. And I think that's, I think that's something that we can be proud of in our, in our, in our state to have the, the largest, I think it was on, um, the, uh, Visit Casper podcast with Wayne Stewart. We said we had the most breweries per capita. Um, and I think that's, that's, that's an accomplishment. We have, cuz it takes, it's a, they're, in, it's their craft beer. It's something that's artisanal, something that's, that's unique to, to Wyoming. And I think that's something to be proud of. But at the same time, we need to focus on, you know, the value that it brings, not, not um, the things that we don't necessarily want that comes with alcohol abuse and substance abuse. So, um, so let's, let's get into another subject that, that's obviously you're very pa- you're very passionate about and that's infrastructure. So Casper's roads are, are frequent complaint among, among residents. And um, what is your plan to improve the maintenance and addressing the backlog of, of repairs? And especially in light of the current budget restraints that, that you have on infrastructure improvements?
Yeah, like I uh said earlier, we did work really hard in the previous ones and al- allocation cycle to boost that funding from three point seven to five point five, five point four five. Um, I'm still concerned it's nowhere near enough. We were told at that time that we needed seven million just to maintain our roads, not even to improve them. Our public works director at the time thought that was a little, um, you know, that wasn't quite uh the number we needed to get to. He was thinking closer to six and that's why we tried getting up to that five point four five. It's unfortunate, but our entire streets budget is, um, comes out of the one cent. And so without the one cent, we would have to find that five point five or more uh million dollars through our general fund of the, you know, and it would come at significant, um, there'd have to be significant sacrifices to be made to find that in other parts of the budget. If I'm still on council, uh, cuz one cent will be on the ballot again in twenty twenty-six. And so uh, during that summer uh or spring, we will, uh, the council at the time will be determining where that money's gonna be allocated so that the voters can feel informed and know what's, you know, know what to expect when they go to the ballot in November. And I will be pushing that we increase our streets funding. I would love to see us get to that seven to eight million, especially considering the cost of inflation. I think that's kind of our bare minimum, our ground floor where we should be. And so we're gonna have to make some decisions. We're gonna have to go without some things that folks are used to. We're gonna have to cut back on maybe our trail building or uh river restoration. Or uh, this last time, part of the way we found that money was we reduced our allocation to nonprofits from three million in the last allocation cycle to two point two five, this million. So about a thirty percent reduction for those folks. And it was painful for them. We had full council chambers for two or three meetings. We received dozens of emails voicing their support for that. City staff initially proposed that we get rid of the nonprofit allocation completely. And uh, there was an uproar. We heard from many, many, many people uh about how bad of an idea that was. And um, so that's why we originally settled on, uh, or we eventually settled on two point two five. We still reduced it because we needed to boost our streets and some of our other expenditures. But it was important enough to the community, we felt, based on the input and feedback we got, that we needed to retain some of it. But um, I've been having a lot of conversations with people the past year or two. And there seems to be an interest in taking whatever money was previously allocated nonprofits and just giving additional spending authority to, for instance, our Casper Police Department to contract with Child Advocacy Project to do forensic interviews with kids that have been in sexually abusive situations. To just give the police department additional spending authority to contract out that service and not have city council deliberate about spending, you know, uh distributing that funding. And to me, that makes a lot more sense. Perhaps there's reasons not to do it. If, if folks have feedback on that, I, again, would welcome it. I wanna hear that so I can sharpen my own opinion. But that's gonna be the direction that I would like to see us going. This next cycle is boosting streets, potentially at the expense of some of the other things that we all like and enjoy, but are just, um, you know, at a certain point, we gotta get back to the basics and we gotta let our infrastructure stop falling behind. That can has been kicked for decades. And I am somebody who does not like to kick cans. I, you know, we gotta, we gotta fix it. I don't wanna punt this issue to my daughter and her generation. And it'll be much, much worse at that point.
Right. You think raising taxes is the only solution or are there other alternative uh funding uh solutions out there?
There's definitely alternative funding solutions. Midwest Avenue was a very expensive project. It occurred in three different phases. And the most recent phase was, I believe, two point, uh, just over two million dollars somewhat. And thankfully, the only reason we were able to do that project without pretty much, you know, cuz two, two and a half million out of a five point four five million dollar streets budget, it's almost ha- you know, it's almost half. So without pretty much uh postponing half of our streets projects to get Midwest on, which really needed to get done. It's one of the, it was one of the worst streets in the city as far as I'm concerned. Uh, but thankfully, we were allowed to get some, I believe it was urban renewal funding. And um, all the municipalities in our county take turns. We all get access to that funding on an annual basis. And town of Evansville did not have any projects on their horizon. We're not gonna use that funding. So thankfully, they allowed us to take their spot kind of in line and we were able to access that funding to get Midwest Avenue done. Otherwise, that project either wouldn't have get done or it would've come at significant expense to the other streets projects. So our team has gotten very good at getting grant funding. Washington Park is another great example, three hundred thousand dollars of city funds to do a one point two, one point three million dollar Washington Park restoration. And so grants is a great way. Beyond that, really the only alternative other than increasing taxes is to make cuts. And um, I'm receptive to that. I think council is receptive to that just in general. But the feedback we get unfortunately is all too often, you need to make cuts, but I don't know where you should. But the feedback we get unfortunately is all too often, you need to make cuts, but I don't know where you should make them. And I don't have any thoughts on, you know, where you should do that. That's the feedback we need, is what can we as a community live without? Or what can we sacrifice in order to catch up on our infrastructure? Because regardless of whether it's trails or the river or nonprofits or anything else, whatever decision we make. People are gonna be upset. The goal is to find the cuts that we can make that will upset the fewest amount of people. And again, without doing surveys, it's really hard to determine what those things are. Because um anytime you consider one topic, the people that are passionate, the user groups, the people that are passionate about that issue, they all come out in support of it. Don't want you to make any changes, and the people that would be alright with it, you know, they're often hard to be found. And so um folks, uh my opinion on how to address this is folks need to get more engaged and give us more feedback on. You know, what sort of sacrifices we can make in the meantime to catch up on infrastructure, because that's the input we need. What specific spending cuts should we make and not just broadly, you guys should spend less money? Well, you know, that's uh that um noted, uh but when, when you're on council, you have to make the hard decisions. That you have to give particular, precise um direction to city staff on which cuts you'd like to make, just speaking in broad terms. Is not very useful.
Right, right. Seems, it seems to me that a lot of people, um some people, some residents have a utopic view of how things should be operated. And it reminds me sometimes of uh conversations that that families have, and I'm sure your, your family is, you know, like every other family is. Children don't always understand why, why the head of the household, you know, can invest in certain things or buy certain things. Why can we go on vacation this year and not, and not next year? Cause life happens, you know, things. So making those choices and 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 making those decisions on what we wanna invest in is, is, is basically running the household of, of, of Casper. The city of Casper, and I think if we have that approach that we are the head of the household, we are, we are responsible for our city. Yes, I think that, that discussion is a, is a, is a fair question, a fair discussion of what can we sacrifice in order to get the things that are higher priority done. But it's, but if we have that approach of it has to get done because I'm dependent on the city to, to make sure my roads are fine. Then that, that creates friction and and frustration, I'm sure with city council members, like it does with parents or heads of, heads of households.
Yeah, it does get frustrating when we get feedback that to me essentially amounts to, uh I want you to do more with less. I wanna have my cake and I wanna eat it too. I wanna spend, I want less taxes, but I want you to plow more streets. It's always tough to make um sense of that sort of uh feedback, you know, going back to the one cent. We have some folks that strongly believe, again, we should not be operating um facilities that they believe should be operated in the private market. And uh so those folks' feedback is, they don't support the one cent and they don't support things like the Ford Wyoming Center, and so my rebuttal to them is always. Okay, well, if we close the Ford Wyoming Center, the Aquatic Center, the Rec Center, Hogedown, the Municipal Golf Course and Fort Casper, all of our city. Our prime city amenities, those all combined require about two and a half, three million dollars in subsidies. So um the one cent funding that we get on an annual basis is about sixteen and a half funding, uh sixteen and a half million. So okay, that'll save us three million, but if you don't support the one cent and you support closing all those facilities, that's fine. I think it's a very unpopular opinion, uh in my experience, the community would not be receptive to that, even if a small group is. But even so, you found three million of the sixteen and a half million that we would be without, where are you gonna find the other thirteen and a half million? Um and so those are the details I'm always asking for when people have, I, I, I welcome criticisms of city spending and uh council direction. But I'm also going to ask people, uh I think it was Teddy Roosevelt uh that said, um and I'm not gonna be able to think of the quote. But um you know, com- uh complaining about something without proposing a solution is just whining, something like that, you know. So if you're gonna complain or criticize city council, I welcome that, but hopefully you also have solutions or propositions following that. That we can act upon and not just, you know, throwing tomatoes and giving us a hard time.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. We'll fix the quote in, in post if we have to.
Use AI or something, make a, you know.
Um let's talk about crime for a few, a few, a few more minutes. Um we're getting, we're getting short on time and there, half of my questions, we're not even getting to. So I think we're gonna have to come back for. Around three, um after the, after the elections and after you've, you know, won your seat again. But crime rates, you know, crime in Casper has fluctuated over the last few years. I read an article um yesterday about how um car burgl- burglaries. Was it car burglaries or maybe home house burglaries, I forget, has actually decreased in the month of June, which is a positive thing. Are there, um there's been talk about police reform, there's been talk about reducing costs there. What, what is your response to that criticism that we might be spending too much um on this, or maybe not enough on uh trying to alleviate crime? Or to put in place, uh implement, implement things to enhance our safety in our, in our town?
I am very supportive of our, our police department. I get the opportunity to interact with those guys a lot. I see the chief at least weekly. What's that?
For speeding?
Yeah, right. Uh yeah, I've actually become way more mindful of that since I've been on city council, cause uh you know, that's newsworthy when city councilors act bad. But so yeah, I'm really, I think we have a great police department. Um we're very fortunate, we're very lucky. You know, there's examples of police brutality and unethical behavior at police departments across the country and stuff. And I'm just thankful that we don't have that here. Uh they do such a great job. They do coffee with a cop events, they do the annual night out. They do a lot of community outreach and so uh appreciative of that. On one hand, they do field a lot of mental health calls. The last numbers I heard, and it's been a year or two, so I don't know how precise they are at this point, but I thought it was like four hundred and fifty mental health. Calls that they get on a yearly basis, so over one a day. And so as somebody who's worked in social services and worked case management and, and worked that perspective, I would love to see more collaboration and partnership. With the police department, perhaps there's um uh events occurring that don't require a police officer. Or um you know, i- isn't gonna be in their highest priority, and maybe it's a case manager from a community mental health center. That would be better served to handle that suicidal uh situation. Obviously, you know, there was a police involved shooting recently where a gentleman was. Threatening suicidal behavior and had a semi-automatic rifle uh very close to him. And that is something that as a former case manager, I would feel a little sketchy about uh getting involved with. There's people out there that will do it. I've, I've worked with people that have had guns held to their heads, um and um man, those people are uh saints, man. They're, it's crazy how you can maintain your composure in that sort of situation, but so I would love to see more collaboration. They do the crisis intervention training. CWCC does crisis intervention training with the police officers to try to educate and inform them about how to handle those situations. But still, the people that work in that in a day-to-day basis, they're gonna understand when somebody's having a schizophrenic or bipolar manic episode. They're gonna better understand what that person needs in that uh moment and how to best de-escalate the situation, just cause they live and breathe and die that stuff. So I would love to see more collaboration, but I'm also not somebody that, you know, would support the phrase defund the police or we need to restrict their funding. We, we are hurting for police officers right now, and that is something that is giving me cause for concern because we have issues. Um you know, uh home burglaries are uh down and stuff, and that's great, but there are, it just feels like society is kind of unstable right now. And there's a bit of unpredictability in the air. And so I, I wanna fully staff police department to not only make sure we can be out there enforcing the law whenever and wherever available. But uh in regards to homelessness, that's, that's when the topic comes up most frequently is, I've talked to a lot of people, their perspective is that we're not doing enough to act on homelessness. Well, um you know, we don't have anywhere near a fully staffed department, so that's part of the issue. They're just stretched very thin, and when there, when there's a home burglary. Or uh potential homicide, or there's other more important things going on, they're not gonna be able to make it downtown to, you know, um encounter someone that. Might not even be breaking the law. They're acting weird and maybe um making people feel uncomfortable, but that's not against the law. They have to be doing something that uh whether it's uh loitering, which has specific conditions to qualify for that, uh harassment or public urination. Or they have to be breaking a law for the police to be able to do anything, and so you know, there's gonna be prioritized less. Even so, I would still encourage people in regards to the homelessness situation, you need to call the non-emergent number and call anytime you see someone actually breaking the law. Again, not just being weird or with their shirt off or something, but if you see someone breaking the law in any way, you need to call the police department, uh non-emergent line. And make sure they're aware of that, because even if they can't respond immediately and the situation resolves itself before they're able to get there, it gives us the data points we need. To, you know, um maximize the impact of our police department, to make sure they're in the right places at the right time. And uh yeah, in regards to homelessness, uh I haven't gotten a recent update, but last year, the percentage of people in our municipal jail that. Identified as homeless increased from ten to twenty percent, so homelessness was contributing greatly to our uh police budget and incarceration. We had originally allocated, I think it was like one point four million for our incarceration budget at the very beginning of fiscal year twenty-four. And now uh we're probably gonna be at three million dollars after it's all set down, so that, that budget item exploded completely. Because more people were ending up in jail and um that's always a tough balance to, to make too, you know. Yeah, it costs a hundred and forty-seven dollars every single night to have someone in jail, and so that's a, an expense that we have to take into account. Uh and is it worth it to keep somebody off the street for potentially minor crimes that, you know, uh everything's a balance, everything's on a spectrum?
Absolutely, but I think we can end on the fact that we need to back the blue.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my point. Um thank you Kyle for joining us again today, and thank you for tuning in to this podcast. Um again, this podcast is powered by uh PayRock, the payment solutions uh provider for businesses. Please make sure to like and subscribe this and share this, most of all, share these, these podcasts, these clips with uh with your network. Um so we can better, better have an idea of how we can take responsibility for our city and, and get involved. Thank you very much.
Thanks Eric, appreciate it.